No, they have it in their book because they don't want that.
Madam Clerk, are you ready?
Yes.
This is a regular meeting conducted as a summary of the whole for Monday, October the 3rd, 2011, 7 o'clock. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Thank you. Ms. Garrison, Mr. Fercasie, Ms. Taylor, Mr. Siver, Mr. Lance, Ms. Seymour, Mr. Fraser.
Here. Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is a request for recognition from Pamela Gerald. You will go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. You have five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mrs. Gerald.
Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. I'm going to deviate from what I have been talking about lately, and that has been the public safety issue with firefighters and safer grade. And I'm going to talk about when the city of Southfield says that we have a standard. Now, I invited you guys to do a mission statement that would explain this Southfield standard that we have. Let me tell you some areas where we're missing the mark. Number one, the last council meeting that was televised, we had the president of the Police Union Association, and as he stated, he has not came before council as often as I have in some other familiar cases. He was talking about a very important matter, and that was grievances with two African-American police officers. And the way you shut him down, the tone of voice that you used to him does not reflect the Southfield standard. And you're always talking about the quorum, it's proper behavior as well as proper speech. How you treated him was not proper. Now, if we have a Southfield standard, why would that officer have been denied his pension? And over a flashlight? That does not reflect the Southfield standard. The other young lady that had the grievance, it was purported, if I heard correctly, because people were outraged, that she was demoted, and 6% of her pay was taken. That does not reflect a Southfield standard. The fact that he couldn't get a meeting with our city administrator, that does not reflect the Southfield standard. Now, you like to stay with this five-minute thing, and great, but it's still a way to do it. Now, I'm going to give you a compliment. You shared with me that you have never taken any college courses. Doesn't matter. You also stated that I thought I was smart. I'm not smart. I'm interested. I'm inquisitive. I have taken some college classes. Doesn't make me smart, doesn't make you not smart. It just means we took a different path in life, okay? But when you said to me that I have this persona like a kid putting my face up in a candy store wanting something that I can't get, there's nothing here at these council meetings that I've wanted that I have not gotten. And what I've wanted was for the people to wake up and start paying attention, and that has happened. Now, you also mentioned "confabulate" the last time. You impressed me again because you obviously Googled the word to see what the second definition is. So I want to give you the new word for tonight. It's misogynistic, okay? M-I-S-O-G-Y-N-I-F-T. It means a man who hates women or a man who believes that men are better than women. That's the persona that you reflect to me. I've told you this numerous times. When I call you at home, you are a completely different person. You do reflect the council president when I call you at home. Maybe it's because you're at home. And I thank you for allowing me to call you at home about city matters. But when you walk into this facility, you turn into somebody totally different. You turn into a bully. Now, with the police department trying to educate kids and people about bullying, you're setting a bad example, because your tone of voice reflects that you're a bully. You disrespected that guy. You disrespected me. You talk about, oh, this agenda is etched in stone. There was one previous meeting in here that I asked you or passed you a note, because you've got a chief of police and an officer in here, which is nice, but it doesn't make me any difference. You yelled out and called my name and said I was disrupting the meeting. When Tyrone Chapman was here talking about something that he wants to do, you allowed Dan Brightwell to pass you a note, and you recognized him. I don't want you to ever tell me what's proper in here if I've observed you doing it.
Your five minutes are up.
And I want to make that clear. Don't ever tell me what's proper in here if I see you doing it.
I don't need it. I have one more.
Misogynistic. That's the word of the day.
Anarchistic, too, is the word.
Yeah. Tell me what it means. Tell it.
Uh, next item on our agenda is a request for recognition from Stephanie English.
Um, this English called and will not be presented for the evening.
Okay. Uh, let's move into the rest of our agenda. We have a liquor license request from Boykin Southfield LLC. Ms. Banks, you want to handle that?
Yes, thank you. This first request is an application from Boykin Southfield LLC and Southfield Linking LLC, doing business at the emphasis suite for Southfield. Basically, what they're doing is they're just transferring their interest in one company to another company, and the new, and one of the new members will be Brayheart Investors LP. Um, the attorney representing the petitioner is present this evening. If you have any questions. Again, this is just a simple transfer of interest in this particular, um, facility.
Okay, if the petitioner would like to add anything, you could come to the microphone.
You can do it, you're welcome.
Give your name, your business address for the record.
My name is, uh, good evening, Fercasie. My name is Robert Babcock. I'm an attorney in the firm of DeLupe, Popper, Dever and Wright. We're located in Ann Arbor, Michigan, 301 North Main Street, Suite 250, area code 48105.
Thank you.
I'm here actually just to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone from the council has any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just reviewed the documents. I have a problem with the law.
Okay, anyone else? Uh, Mr. Lance?
I just did the story, and I have no problem. Okay?
One question I do have though. When is the next council?
24th.
24th.
I was going to ask if you can do a real town.
A real town. Actually, all their guns are transferring them, right? So they're not like to, we're holding, we're not like, we're holding them up from doing business.
I'd move in a real town.
It's been moved by Mr. Siver, supported by Mr. Lance, since we find an immediate need to act. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Um, Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Siver?
Yes.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
Mr. Lance? Mr. Fercasie?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
I've been through approval of the liquor license. I guess you saw the transfer.
Transfer.
Up to Boykin Southfield LLC.
It's been moved by Mr. Siver, supportive by Ms. Taylor, to approve the liquor license transfer request as presented. Are there any questions? I do have one question, if no one else does, and that is, when I read through the information, I noticed that there was no request to sell liquor on the Sunday morning. You know, the law changed last year, and Sunday morning sales. I know some, uh, some businesses have requested that through the liquor license commission to sell. I don't know if you're interested in that or not.
Put it on here.
Pardon me?
Put it on here, check, Sunday sale.
Yeah, Sunday, but not early morning sale.
Oh, okay.
You can sell on Sunday afternoon, but not, uh, but you're familiar with what I've done.
I am, yes.
Okay. And I didn't see that either. I don't know if, you're not interested in it, or if, uh...
At this time, I don't know whether they're interested or not. If you need the answer to that.
No, but they'll need, I mean, that's up to you.
Yes.
All right? Um, the vote was, let's take a vote. We did take a vote. We are, we took a roll call vote on the, on the, yeah, real ten. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried. I typically don't ask questions. Thank you. So, you don't have to come back on the 24th. Everything is taken care of now. You just, whatever steps you need to take after approval from the council, you're set to do that.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a liquor license request from Hadea Investments Incorporated.
Um, yes, this next request, um, from Hadea Investors is, um, is the Ciro's Restaurant, located at 29221 Northwestern Highway. This is, um, one of the two remaining licenses that the city does presently have in its allotment. Um, Mr. Mike Hadea is present this evening. As you recall, this came before council. It was a month ago, it could have been two months ago, and there were some pending, um, issues with records to the building. Um, Mr. Hadea is up to date on any building violations that existed in the past. The taxes are paid and so there is no, um, pending water bill. So we are before you this evening, um, a consideration of the liquor license transfer. He is present along with his attorney, Mr. Applebaum. Does counsel have any questions?
If the petitioner would like to add anything to the presentation, please go to the microphone. Give your name and your business address for the record, and tell us what you want to tell us.
Good evening. My name is Alan Applebaum. I'm an attorney from Farmington Hills. My address is 31550 Northwestern Highway, Suite 110, Farmington Hills, Michigan, 48334. I stand before you with my client, Mr. Luis Arh Hadea. His residential address is 35490 Hathaway Place, Sterling Heights, Michigan, 48310. Um, I am assuming that all the council members are familiar with Ciro's Restaurant and Dick's here in Southfield, or since I was a lawyer back in a long time ago. Mr. Hadea bought the restaurant about a year ago. He's looking to expand the business to include liquor sales in a very, uh, high-volume commercial area in Southfield, at the corner of Northwestern Highway and 12 Mile Road. Um, he's, he's had the restaurant, uh, for a year now. He's invested a significant sum in the restaurant. In the course of his assets, he's going to be investing some more money in the restaurant to put booze, better booze in, and screw this place up. I think you can give all that information to the council in your application. Mr. Hadea, if you have any questions for me, or Mr. Hadea, welcome to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, does anyone in the council have any questions? Uh, Mr. Fercasie.
Yeah. Uh, city clerk, when was this first heard? I don't recall this coming before us.
I, I want to say it was on March. It's kind of the, well, we brought it before council two months ago, and it was pending a few, pending the building department approval. So council adds that there's the tables, not tables, but that it be brought in.
Did you actually have any agenda?
Yeah, we asked, yeah, we asked for that.
Yeah, if, the last time I was here, it was the building, if I recall right, the building department said they approved it pending the correction of the, of the errors that needed to be corrected. And we sent it back saying, before it comes to us, the problems need to be corrected so that, uh, we know that we're dealing with someone that has already fixed the problem. So that's why I had to be back here this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I, I guess I, um, I called the city clerk today because I was not sure how many licenses were available, and that city clerk, if I think I'm wrong, has been has two licenses that came back from the state. Hurricane got the last license that we had, and I didn't get to any more licenses to give. This is against the city's quota. This is not a purchased license, in which it's purchased and brought into the city or purchased from in the city to another establishment. Uh, so I, I didn't know that we had two licenses to give. The other thing that the city clerk and, and that I want to ask you to, to, uh, talk about just for a moment, is that in order to get more licenses, um, the two licenses has to be given out for, I guess, what is it called, a district?
Yes, the, um...
Please explain to council, you should explain the name.
The, the, the city is presently looking at creating, uh, districts. What's the name of the district? It's called a, I don't, I don't know the name of the district. I'm drawing a blank right now, but it, it, it's a, it's a designated area whereby any business that wants to come into that area and purchase a liquor license from the city of Michigan, I think it's for like $20,000 or $25,000. However, and we will not be restricted on the number of liquor licenses that will be allowed. And, and there's been discussion, and there's been between attorney's office, planning department, you know, our business development team, exactly how much of the city do they want to include in this district. But before we can even take that next step, we cannot have any remaining liquor licenses available. That, that's how we found out that we had two remaining licenses. Um, one had expired in escrow and came back to the city, and one was just given back to Liquor Control Commission last year. They never told us about it. Actually, we found out by accident when we were discussing creating this particular district. So we're almost ready to move forward on the next step, but we can't do anything until liquor licenses are given out. We have three applicants right now that are signing for two of the licenses that are remaining.
What's the license that we give, 1,500? License, one of the city licenses given?
One for 1,500 population.
No, no, I'm talking about the amount of money.
The cost is $1,500, because, um, the fingerprinting side of them, there's costs up and down. It's probably like between, um, $2,000 and $2,500 total. Yeah, so you kind of go through the police department, season, everything over there.
So in other words, if any one, somebody who does business in the city center, north area, then they could go out and buy a license for $25,000 from an establishment in local county, buy it from the state. Licenses are going for around $20,000, $25,000, you know, from county that are in escrow. I, I guess, my question is, why is that so high if the object is to establish a, a meeting area in the city, such as the plan for the city center? That, that is a real negative upon somebody that's going to put maybe a two million into a restaurant, and have to pay $25,000 for a license which they could get. One of these licenses was 1,500. In other words, the licenses historically have been used to, to attract businesses to the city.
That's correct. But you have...
And, and so if it weren't for the district, we'd be looking at these two licenses differently.
Well, first of all, we did not even know we had these two licenses.
Well, that's what I meant.
And it was a, basically the Liquor Control, Control Commission dropped them, and they didn't let us know that we had it. We thought, when we issued the last two licenses, and I believe it was of the Ethiopian restaurant, and also the restaurant on Northwestern Highway here, Hurricane Grill, those were the two last liquor licenses that we had, that we issued. And once those two liquor licenses were issued, and we had no licenses left, we went back to the table to see how could we accommodate businesses that may want to move across the street, may want to go into the cornerstone development district, and that's when we discovered this business, this is a business redevelopment. Drawing a blank on the name of it, I'm sorry. And, and before we can establish the center, we have to, we can't have any liquor licenses remaining. So there's still going to be an opportunity for businesses to come into our city, and I don't know, maybe with the economy in the present state, Lampkin is the one that sets the price, now that it is southfield, so maybe they'll lower that price tag. But we haven't even been able to take that next step, because we presently have two licenses southfield.
But you want to attract, you want to attract businesses to a, a, an area where we are lacking in business, restaurants, especially, uh, restaurants with a class N.C. license. Restaurant business is a tough business. And to ask, when you're trying to attract somebody to pay $25,000 in addition, you ask them to come into an area that's, that's quite a bit, uh, different than coming into the area and here's a license for 1,500. And, uh, I guess, I, I look at these licenses as, as still an attraction, uh, to move into the city and start a business that is not here, and, uh, and put it where we need entertainment and restaurants that are, are close proximity to where our major, uh, office buildings are. And as the city clerk, who also gave me, uh, uh, the, you know, the, hang on, I want, anyway, you know, uh, point of where all these licenses are, and, and, uh, you know, it's almost like, like an escape hatch to me, right? Hate to call it that, but, but there's, you know, everybody's up there in the northwest section of the city, and, and, you know, you got 2, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 licenses all in the northwest quadrant of the city.
Of course, that was planned anyway. When Nick was here, that was planned. That was the entertainment. That was supposed to be the entertainment, Nick.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, uh, and it never happens.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but I, I still have the belief that in order to attract, uh, these licenses, uh, in an area where we have the greatest density of, of business, is really important, especially if we're going to fall through on a city center plan. And, um, I don't know, I, uh, Ciro's, um, to me has always been like, um, ever since, uh, Gateway, so you seem like the group went from Gateway up to, to, to Ciro's. You see a lot of the customers up there. I, uh, it's more of a family and, and, uh, a different clientele than you normally see in a, in a, in a, um, business with liquor license. And, uh, so I, I bring this up because I, I just really, uh, caught in between, because I, I, you know, you like to create a district and bring these licenses, and I'm really, uh, surprised that, that they're using a license to attract business and they have to pay $25,000 to, to start a business with the, with the license and they give away for $1,500 if we have them. Uh, I'm not a, opposed to it. I just, uh, you know, do you get rid of them quickly, or do you still use them to attract licenses in the area in which we're looking to develop?
Well, we've got another problem. And, uh, uh, because we lost, because we lost population during the last census, our quota license dropped one. It went down one. Uh, so these are the last, these are the last two that are, uh, that are, against the last census.
Census.
Uh, the 2,000 census. So if we don't get rid of the, if we don't use these, not get rid of, if we don't use these two, we're most likely going to lose one. And I think the Liquor Control Commission just gave us a sort of a special dispensation for a little while, but we can't count on it being there forever. So if we want to wait until somebody comes in, into the city center area, and, uh, we can give them a quote-unquote "free license," it may not be there, because the Liquor License Control Commission may say, uh, you know, "time's up." So, uh, but with, and for the sake of any other term, we'll call it a development district license. Uh, are you saying that those are the ones that are $25,000?
Yes.
Who sets that price?
Yes, the Liquor Control Commission, right?
Well, the, the, yes, the state of Michigan does, but I thought that the licenses within local counties are going for more than $25,000, that's about the only reason.
Well, there's, there's a lot of restaurants going out of business, and there's a lot of them being placed in escrow, uh, is because the competition is so keen. I mean, we've seen, you know, we've seen Morton's Dog over here, and we've seen Bull and Hensley's Lot here, and, uh, those, uh, you know, pretty nice restaurants to have in this quadrant, uh, it would be, uh... I, I guess, I, I guess I would like to help a small businessman and give him a license. Uh, I, I don't recall this being odd, but could you help me out? Have we seen what they were going to do with this, uh, place, or are they going to throw away from the way they've been operating? Uh, are they, I mean, I haven't seen any drawings and menus or anything other than requesting a license. Uh, but the family-type restaurant now, in, in the finish shopping center, isn't much you can do outside, but, you know, I mean, is that going to bring any, is that going to bring any, anything different to the city that we don't already have? I mean, you've got that new place there, or Excalibur, was there dining around the bank, and, uh, that's a nice restaurant. Anyways, I don't...
Could you bring back the Excalibur? I'll see what I can do.
Pardon?
Could you bring back the Excalibur?
Yeah, you may both. And anyways, so, so, Mr. Chairman, I, my, I should stick with the policy that we had one time, and that is to attract business to the city center area, and, and I think we could be able to attract them more readily if we would offer them a license for 1,500 than, than trying to tell them, "need the $25,000." I understand what my colleagues talked about.
Well, I was going to say, the only, the only problem is, we could sit on that and say that, uh, we want to hold that, which we did for years and years, held that one to, for development in the city center, and it was almost like it was indelibly written across that one that this is being held for city center, and we never did use it for it. And the problem is that the Liquor Control Commission is going to, is going to trump our, our cards and say, "sorry, you can't have it anymore." So it won't, it just, another restaurant in some other place other than the city center won't be able to take advantage of one of those. won't be able to take advantage of one of those.
I, this is a chance to stand up, I guess.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I just want another opportunity to speak.
You asked about the composition of the building itself and the business. I'd like to hear from the owner to see what he plans to do to enhance the business with a license.
What are your plans, Sheriff?
My plan is going to be like the menu, and yes, I want the menu, menu and the breakfast lunch menu.
Can you stick the mic over it? You can pull it over, you can pull the mic over a little bit, please.
The only problems we have right now, the dinner tag. We don't have any type of business there. Most, I can't tell, the Northwestern's are office there, it's all offices there. So we have a business and breakfast, I'm up for dinner, one. So I'm applying to get a liquor license in my place to make mine dinner better than that it's right now. Of course, can I say that this is like this probably in a six, seven months? I have to close because I cannot afford to pay all my expenses. Northwestern rent is very high there. The restaurant is almost forty-eight hundred square foot. So I have too many expenses. Water will, you guys will know, I pay almost fifteen, sixteen, sometimes fourteen hundred monthly. Consumer energy, eighteen hundred, consumer energy, almost fifteen hundred. I have expenses over five, six thousand dollars plus my payrolls. I have over fifteen people that are working for me. The only thing I'm looking to get a liquor license is for dinner tag. And I agree that you guys probably looking to bring some more people from other cities to Southfield. But I have a question also. How about the business owner in the Southfield, or do you want you guys to let them leave or to stay? To me, I want to stay there. That place has been exist for thirty, for thirty-five years. To me, it's a history. I don't know how you guys will feel if you pass by Cero's and you're going to see it closed.
Why would you think, yeah, why would you think that we're suggesting that we're going to pass by you?
No, I mean, that's the way he's writing the Northwestern. My location has been there, it exists for thirty-five years. The way I'm doing, the way we have a business right now, it's very tough. And I can show in the paper also how much I'm making, how much my expenses. We survive in this, you know. So I'm planning to get a liquor license to increase the sales at dinner time only.
Mr. Banks, you still have to vote.
Yeah. What are you going to do about renovating it and more enhancements to become a type of restaurant to gather in the customers for the liquor? What are you going to do?
The customer, you mean?
Yeah.
Customers are holding a...
What are you saying, what building improvements are you planning on making to attract the dinner crowd once you have the liquor license? You're going to renew the booth, are you going to change the lighting?
I will do a remodel inside, changing the booth, new lighting system there. I already set up the bar. I have a bar there. It's big possible I'll change the flooring also, I'm not feeling. But my first plan is going to be to change the booth and lighting system.
And what, how much of that, that you anticipate you're going to make?
It's going to cost me easy with the bar, all this stuff. It's going to cost me about seventy to seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars. And so far, I spent almost ten, twelve thousand dollars since I applied. And you guys asked me to do a lot of updates there. The place has been exist for years. So I have to go buy a new comb for the city, which is, I update everything, like attrition, plumbing, also landscaping, you know, which is, that wasn't my, I shouldn't do it. The landlord, but I want to go forward, so I do it by myself. Both hands, well, rainy day, I swear, well, rainy day, but I have to get it in a damn to be in the janitor. So I'm really looking to get the license to make that place stay in business. And I want to stay there. I have a family, I have two kids, also second kid. And I totally have fourteen to fifteen people they're working for in that place.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Can Miss Yon?
Yes, what are you, are you planning on making changes to the dinner menu to attract a different crowd?
Dinner menu, yes. I have to, because you can't...
I actually think so. I just want to know.
Yeah, the dinner menu after five o'clock, I will pull the breakfast and lunch menu. Because most of it is like for office, offices.
You're going to have a separate menu for dinner. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, it's going to be separate menu for the dinner.
Okay, but you're going to make some changes to that, to what you serve? So it's, would you attract people that maybe wouldn't normally come there?
Sure, sure. I have to update my menu. It's going to be like more steak, like a steakhouse style, something like that. Soup is going to be for families. It's not only like a bar just to get drunk and leave, no. It's going to like a fancy place, you know, with a new menu.
I'm just looking for an upgrade in the dinner menu. That's my opinion, that you, if you want to attract people, you have to be competitive with what's in that area.
So you want to know what's going to be in the menu?
Well, I'd like to, but if you don't know...
No, I'm, it's always going to be like some type, mostly steak is going to be. Because I have probably four or five only right now. And it's going to be some grill stuff more than before, like appetizers. That's all.
More high-end food?
Oh, yeah.
Right now, the Cero's menu is more of, it's really, if you look at the menu, I've been going there for thirty years. It's breakfast, it's eggs, it's a hamburger. But I believe he's going to update it.
I know what it is.
The price point's going to increase for the dinner, obviously, to accommodate that.
So it's going to be a lot more of a raising level?
It's not raising, but it's going to be like, it's a little bit, price is going to be higher in the dinner. But it's not that high, you know, that...
Hopefully, your menu is going to be different.
The menu is going to be totally different at five o'clock here.
Oh.
Okay. Mr. President?
Yeah, I guess I would still like to see more of what is planned to give away a license. I may have been in it many, many times. And, you know, if you change it too much, you're going to lose the breakfast and lunch. You've been in thirty years, I've been in forty, fifty years in that place. And I just, you know, if you have a clientele that always goes there, for lunch and for breakfast. And we have business get together sometimes for breakfast there. And, I mean, you change the whole type of business you have. Secondly, it's on the wrong side of the street for people who are going home and stopping on the way home. To, I mean, I just don't think the liquor license is going to help that much. I don't think it's going to be a negative. But, I mean, I'm really torn because I sure like to help this gentleman out. But to answer your question about across the street mode, and I was going through his licenses and thinking about it, I picked up, and I do, there's just so many times I've picked up things that I put in my favorite boxes. I had home, did a study from across the street in nineteen ninety-five. You know, and in that study, they, the types of businesses across the street, they said restaurants, bistros, pubs, book, magazine stores, coffee houses, number of varieties, freestanding in the bookstore, entertainment, including movie theaters, comedy clubs, music clubs, restaurant, coffee houses, a drugstore, apparel, the accessory stores. This is a study done by probably home in ninety-five. I don't think, then, of course, you had all these things that came out at the time. But I don't think we really aggressively went out and said, you know what? We've got the center, center group that pays roughly two cents a square over there. And they have hot dogs on Thursday.
In the summer, too.
In the summer, too. And, I mean, that to me is not being aggressive move to build up that area. And big shame was losing Morton's. If you could have built a real restaurant, uh, road by having that area. Because you'd have different layers of costs to go to. And, and I guess I, I would like to see, on this one, I would like to see a plan. Not against the license, but I'm not going to, my vote is not going to go for it without the plan and menu and see what they're going to do to it. Because today is just a nice restaurant, people kind of getting in, in lunch and breakfast. And I don't see a dinner, dinner crowd going there irrespective of what they do to that place. As a matter of fact, I think they'll lose what they have. So that's just my opinion. And I think that after this discussion, I'd like to really ask Council, President, and my colleagues to really find out if we're really going to attack this across the street and do something. Because we, we'll have to do something to really jump in and be very proactive in developing it. And sidewalks aren't going to do it, you know, and walkways aren't going to do it. And we have to have, we have to have some place of people kind of gate. If you don't, you're going to lose the big businesses that are actually directing all this space in town. I mean, some of the people go to all the fast foods back and forth on Evergreen Road. But being in the area in the restaurant business, I know there's a lot of white tabletops that are looking for a place to eat. Corporate people, CEOs, they're looking for a place to sit down and talk business. And we really don't have this in this area. And I would sure feel better if I was walking up to one of them and saying, I, you get your license for fifteen hundred. And then walk up to somebody and say, come on into my district, you're going to sell you us twenty-five thousand.
Mr. Sabre?
I think this is a case of a bird in the brush and a bird in hand. We have a bird in the hand here right now. I don't see anything happening across the street anytime soon. While I respect what Councilman Focasi is saying, we waited a long time for that to happen. I plan to support this request. It was a well-established, long-time business in the city. And I think we, it reminds me of case of Ethiopia and what went there in their wait for a license. And they're, they're still in business and it's...
So I plan to support it. Mr. White?
What I see here is a immediate future. And we can't deny the future. The owner explains what he's going to do. We don't have to put it down on a piece of paper to not believe him what he's going to do. How many seats do you have now?
I have about a hundred. No, it's almost a hundred fifty-five.
Okay.
But I can go up to a hundred and eighty with every pay.
There's the future. There's the room, and there's the future, and your plan is the future. I will go along with that, too. And I believe he should be given granted what he has been seeking. So Council, I think we should go through with this and give this gentleman the opportunity to widen up that section, and I think it could be done. So let's not go off into the Morton restaurant. Why, they went out of business? I know why they went out of business. Because the economy changed, all the businesses around him disappeared. He didn't have his customers anymore. So, I didn't go there anymore to spend hundreds of dollars in one sitting. And all the rest of the big business people, they're not there anymore. The building's empty. We can't deny this section. This section is liable to be built up, and I believe it will be. So, cause of Florida.
Anyone else? Ms. Banks?
Yes.
Now, you said we have two licenses. We have three petitioners with two licenses. Is this one of the three petitioners?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if this is successful, we will have one license and two petitioners. Okay.
And in all fairness, Cero's restaurant was the first applicant to apply, and it's...
This is the one, this first by...
I was just saying, for the record, I agree with both Mr. Sabre and Ms. Yon. I feel like this is right here, right now, in front of us. We don't know what might be a problem. To my understanding, from what I'm hearing here tonight, is that we stand in a position where we still might lose one license anyway if we hold on and wait too long. And he's been here for years, and worked with his own community, so it's in the range.
Not only that, I would say, I call Lansing was probably an emperor for, because of the control. I asked them, what's the question of that then, how can I get a liquor license? They asked me what city you are. I gave them four, they told me you guys have two licenses available. That's why I applied.
Yeah, we had, we have two licenses, yes.
I don't know, probably I was the first one knowing about it. But I called Lansing. I remember very well. They told me there's two available. Go apply. That will happen. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for telling us.
Yeah.
Now, an answer to Councilman Focasi. When a license goes into escrow, according to Jack, and he's mentioned this to us on a number of occasions, it will stay in escrow for five years. And then it will become a pre-licensed again. Now, chances are, once these two are gone, the first one that comes out of escrow, we will lose. So we will have to wait until the second license comes out before we'll have one that will be quote unquote free license. But any business is free to purchase a license in some other community and bring it into Southfield as long as it's in Oakland County. So, but again, those licenses go for something in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars. I know Jack has said, and for the sake of a better term, the development district licenses, there is no limit to those. That we can have as many of those as we want. Maybe between now and then, we need to work with the state to find out if there's a way, especially in this economy, that we can reduce the price of those licenses to assist small businesses to go into business. And if the economy gets better at some point in time, maybe the, you know, the cost would go back to where it's at now. But everybody needs a break now to make ends meet. So pockets aren't near as deep as they used to be.
And out of the processes, I mean, the other meaning, but we just weren't going to raise the bay and solve the two licenses we're asking that you're going to change.
Mr. Focasi?
Yeah, on page four, the financial qualification statement, what is that? Is that twenty-five thousand, you pay twenty-five thousand for the business?
Twenty-five thousand, I paid, but it's a payment I have to pay.
Yeah, I got it, okay.
A lot of six digits on that. I didn't have paperwork. Six.
Twenty-five thousand.
Two point zero zero.
Is that it?
Yeah, so I just, I just sit it in my head now. Give a three license, twenty-five thousand for business and something, seventy-five.
Mr. White?
I'd like to make a motion.
There's been trouble with me for a month.
I'd like to make a motion for a rule ten to one.
I'm going to, I'm going to push back on that right now. And the reason is, if we, if we wait until the twenty-fourth, they'll be on television. They'll get some free advertisement. Do it tonight, fine, we can do it tonight. He won't come back on the twenty-fourth. But on the twenty-fourth, if we wait until, to vote on it on the twenty-fourth, he can come back, he can make his pitch on television. So anybody that's watching will know that Cero's is going to be upgraded. It's going to have new menu, it's going to... know that Cero's is going to be upgraded, uh, it's gonna have new menu, it's gonna, can do, but, it's up, it's up to you. I will, for the sake of the petitioner, I would rather see him come back on the twenty-fourth so they get some, some free advertisement.
Well, can we give him assurance that, um, like a straw vote or something? That, uh...
Well, we can take, we can take a consensus.
Consensus?
Yes.
Can I speak to them?
Sure.
I, I, the only reason I'd really rather have it done tonight, that's possible, especially if we're gonna have a successful vote, and I don't know, believe me, I don't know, my reading of tea leaves is never, never good. He's not, well, he'll, he will be making a renovation of that restaurant, he certainly doesn't wanna lose, this young lady said, you know, "The lunch and breakfast business is a significant, obviously, portion of the business. He's looking to only increase his dinner business. Would he like publicity? Absolutely." But I don't wanna have it like, have too many bells and whistles, and whistles and bells go off, because our, our core customers, no matter what happens with this liquor license, our core business is still, this core business is still gonna be the breakfast and lunch dinner. This is to make the dinner viable, more vibrant, upscale, upscale a little more, but he does not want it all of a sudden to shock the conscience of his existing customers. This is gonna be a slow transition, he's gonna make the renovations, a clean screw transition, and, um, believe me, we appreciate the fact that we're on TV in Southfield more, people are gonna know, but people are gonna know. They're gonna find out Cero's is a popular place, people are gonna walk in and find out that there's gonna be advertising, there's gonna be new menus, uh, at least at dinnertime. Um, we would respectfully request, and I've talked my kind of doing this off the cuff, if the vote's gonna happen, we would respect, we have it tonight, people in Southfield will find out, believe me, Cero's is a popular place, they will know, and they will know so.
I, I watch television, go to events, watch these, aren't you supposed to give this to your client in order to let them make the decision?
No, 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 just always, "I wanna sleep today."
Yeah, okay, fine. You know, I was, I was just making the suggestion to help you out with, with free advertising. So, uh...
He can come back anyway.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Lance has, uh, had a motion for Rule 10, and it's been supported by Mr. Seibert. Uh, we find an immediate need to act. Uh, Ms. Banks, would you please call a roll?
Thank you. Mr. Ficassi?
No.
Um, Miss Seymour?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Do you have five in favor of a motion? You need to act, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to grant a liquor license for Cero's.
Of course.
It's been moved by Mr. Seibert, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the liquor license for Cero's as presented. Uh, are there any questions? Any discussion? Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor, say the five, we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let the record show that there was one no vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify my no vote by stating my reasons, and, and my reasons are there is not sufficient investment in, in this, uh, business to qualify for a class C license, uh, the class C license which is requested is not gonna be, uh, a primary, uh, traction for his business. And, uh, and I believe that, uh, that, uh, this license could be better used, uh, to attract a business that has to have a, like, a license to exist, uh, and in the city center area.
Who would, what would you consider a, an adequate investment?
Quarter of a million.
Well, if you look back in the, he has two promissory notes. One was for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, the other's for a hundred thousand dollars, that he has to pay off at the rate of fourteen hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-nine cents per, per month.
I, I see a page that says twenty-five thousand. I asked that question, and it's on, uh, page four, in the financials qualification statement.
Two hundred and twenty-five.
I asked that question, and he answers twenty-five thousand.
The lawyer said, "There's a lot of zeros behind that."
He did answer it, Tom.
Well, that, the, the two that's in front of the two, it looks like the dollar sign. In my piece, they brought that. And, and, uh...
My handwriting.
And, and the balance of the loan is, the balance of the loan is...
There's a balance in the loan of two hundred, uh, how much?
Two thousand eight hundred thousand.
Two twenty-five.
Right?
There was a, there was a twenty-five thousand dollar down payment made, I believe. I did this transaction back in, in...
Two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five, and he owes two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on the balance of the purchase price. So, he hasn't put the cash up, he borrowed the money, and is paying that back at a, at a month, at a, at a month.
Where is the balance of the loan? I mean, I can't, whoever, my, I see twenty-five hundred, there's a comma after the two, and eight zero zero, and a period, and two zero zero, that's, to me, that's twenty-seven thousand.
In Article number nine, Article number nineteen, Be Like Roy, the purchase price is two hundred and twenty-five thousand. What is the total down payment? It shows some zeros and fractions, and then the balance of the loan is twenty-eight dollars a month at five percent over ten years.
That's per month.
That's per month.
Yeah, I, I gotta, I gotta understand.
It's my lousy handwriting, and I apologize, but it's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, I leave my statement there, my statement.
Okay. I do have one question, and it has nothing to do with the vote that we took, but it's just, uh, a technicality. On the second promissory note?
Yes.
Says monthly payments are fourteen hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-nine cents, commencing July thirty-first, two thousand and eleven, and continuing on the same day of each month thereafter, except there aren't all those thirty-one days in every month.
On February, when we hit the February twenty-eighth, he'll make the payment on the twentieth.
Okay.
And the third, it just so happens that, you're right, that, if, in the calendar, it was a one out of thirty-one chance we could fall on that day of the month when we closed.
All right. Uh, thank you very much. You, uh, were done?
Thank you very much. We really appreciate, we thank the city of Southfield very much.
Okay.
Thank you again, I'm thankful for everything.
Okay. Uh, the next item on our agenda is, uh, engineering contract extension. Uh, Mr. Sherriff, would you like to do that?
Yes.
Do you also have another comment, Ms. Sherriff?
Yes, uh, by a minute, yes. Uh, to the chair, to correct the record, there was a comment made in the communications portion of the agenda with regard to an allegation that a pension was held up, and also, uh, that a, an employee, uh, was demoted. Uh, both of those are alone, so I'd like to correct it for the record. Thank you very much. Uh, if I could, uh, I would ask, uh, if we could take the engineering contract extension and the water and sewer item, the latter item, first, uh, Mr. Zorn and the staff has a PowerPoint presentation, and we think it would flow better if we do it that way in the hope that we get to participate on the World Series bound Detroit Tigers ballgame.
That's right.
So, with that, I have, uh, the two items. Uh, first of all, a request, uh, that, uh, we continue the existing contracts with HRC and OHM, Aurora and Clark, and Archie Mills and the Fund for Engineering Services, along with the addition of Tucker Young, Jackson Toll Incorporated of Detroit, Michigan. Uh, this is through June thirtieth of two thousand and twelve, pending a full request for proposal process as required by the federal government grant processes. Uh, as outlined in the, uh, request, uh, this will be to focus on existing, uh, projects and not expand, uh, the level of services, uh, as, as outlined. And, uh, the addition of Tucker Young, Jackson Toll, uh, Incorporated of Detroit, Michigan, is in recognition of their, uh, forensic engineering expertise that's demonstrated by their assistance, the city staff in the bid process for water and sewer excavation services, and their recognized expertise in water and sewer projects. Uh, I would ask, uh, this matter will be brought back before council for, uh, formal action, uh, later today, uh...
This is what we're discussing, this one, I think.
The council. Meeting in the council chambers.
One year.
And, uh...
This is the back of the trailer, for me?
No, I've got PowerPoint. Uh, so that's the first item, and I would ask...
I have a, I have a question, um, why don't we ask, before we go to the second item? You're gonna do the water and sewer?
Yes.
Okay. Before we get to the water and sewer, let's, are, are there any questions about this? This item? That anybody needs to talk about?
Well, to the chair, I would also ask, just for a consensus on this, so, uh, we can continue, pending the formal recognition. I, I cannot ask you for Rule 10.
Okay.
I think this should be, you know, in the chambers.
Okay, I, oh, Mr. Seibert?
Yeah?
Oh, I, I wanna ask one question. Uh, the way this is written up, and the, and the contract says that they can only work on the items that are listed, what happens if, uh, uh, by some miracle, the federal government says, uh, "Here's a truck full of money that, uh, you can do with, anything you wanna do with, as long as it has to do with, uh, engineering and..."
We, we will eagerly share that opportunity with the city council and the public.
Items ten and seven, the language is engineering services associated with grant projects. We've put that language in because if the President's job bill goes through, we could see a repeat of what happened with the stimulus in February of two thousand and nine.
But the handcuffs will be taken off of these two?
Yes.
And allow them to bid on...
If we receive significant grants...
Yes, sure.
First of all, we have to come to council, get them approved, right?
Yeah.
And then we would, it would be talked about.
Yeah. 'Cause I, I just wouldn't wanna put words in there that, uh, if something happened, that we couldn't take advantage of it.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, uh, consensus, uh, a consensus around the, the table of, uh, should we bring this back on the twenty-fourth for, uh, action? Uh, Mr. Ficassi?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert? Mr. Lance?
Yeah.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
And I say yes. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Next item is the increased scope of the sewer loan.
Yes. Uh, on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and ten, uh, council approved the establishment of a sewer loan revolving fund in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the interest rate of three percent, or fifteen percent, to assist residents in hooking into the sewer system from separate places, basically on the west side, uh, of town. Uh, we have had success with that program, uh, with, uh, assisted about a dozen homeowners. However, we're, we're wanting to expand this because the, there, within that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars we set up, we designated in the water and sewer fund, uh, we have expended only about sixty-five thousand dollars. So, uh, we want to both keep, continue encouraging the sewer hookups, but also expand it to the water system. There are some wells that are failing, and sometimes folks, when they hook up to the sewer, also wanna hook up to the city water system at the same time. And so we, we would like to expand this program within this, not with new money, the same money, but just, uh, and, uh, expand it to the water system as well, to water hookups.
Uh, comments? Questions? Uh, one question. Uh, do the, uh, payments, when they are paying off their, their loans, does that go back into the, into this fund?
Yes, it is a revolving fund.
It is a revolving fund?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Um, I'll start the other way around, uh, consensus to, uh, have this appear on the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Ms. Seymour? Mr. Lance? Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Ficassi?
Yes.
And I say yes. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Uh, next item on our agenda is the neighborhood stabilization program. Uh, one and three updates?
Uh, trying to get you the lights right now. Yeah. The handouts are the, uh, slides on the PowerPoint. They read, uh, left to right, top to bottom. To members of the, uh, council tonight, we wanna make a presentation on NSP one and three, and update where we're at. In addition, uh, on the twenty-fourth, we will be asking for two actions from the council. First action is to enter into a formal subrecipient agreement with HUD for both NSP one and three to permit the Southfield Grove Corporation to continue the administrative entity for the NSP one and three. Uh, some of you may recall that when we originally adopted NSP one and three, council empowered the Southfield Grove Corporation to handle the day-to-day management, uh, activities of the NSP one. HUD has come back and said, you know, "It's kinda close, it looks just like the city, but let's have a more formal relationship," and they have a standard subrecipient agreement. That document did not exist when the NSP one program was first created. A funny comment from some of the field staff regarding NSP one and now NSP three was, "The day that we'll have it perfect will be the day the program ends." This is a new program, uh, a subset of it, uh, Community Development Block Grant, there were still a lot of technical things being worked out. On a daily basis, we see new rules being promulgated regarding the administration of the NSP one and the NSP three program. I have, uh, tonight, uh, with us Scott Habowski and Diana Pegler, who are part of our NSP one and three staff. Erica Williams, our Community Development Block Grant Coordinator in the Housing Department, is not with us this evening. Uh, Erica handles most of our reporting and the draws to the federal government for money. Scott and Erica both handle the intake functions. Uh, Scott processes the application, where, uh, Diana does the one-on-one meeting with clients and preparing letters of acceptance. Uh, Scott handles most of our production at this point, as the program has evolved, uh, getting bids, contracts for demolition, working with homeowners, relative materials, where Ms. Pegler handles the closing, uh, helps clients clean up items with credit reports and dealing with lenders. So that's pretty much the lay of the land and the administrative support for the NSP program as it has evolved in Southfield. Um, I have the, uh, I have the... Uh, let's, let's just jump in. I know, uh, Ms. Pegler handed out a copy of the NSP three grant that, yep?
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Pegler's, uh, handed out a copy of the NSP three grant, said the last time council saw the grant, there were a few minor amendments, uh, the contract has been approved by HUD. Uh, this is working?
Yeah. Fred, we don't have the grant.
Oh, Diane, I thought...
I didn't make one for everyone, so I can't make that happen.
Okay, but, Don, uh, you had one.
No, that's...
No, we don't.
This is one I asked, this is one I asked you.
It was one, we will get that to you then, uh, the, uh...
This is, this is one of the three, and I...
You showed me a document, and I thought...
Yeah, this is for city of Southfield, Michigan, NSP three, so...
You downloaded it off the web.
No, I didn't, I got it in my materials, uh, but it's quite a while ago.
Okay.
Yeah, so he has the original.
Okay.
He's got the original, so, this is good.
That is, pretty much the document has been approved by HUD. Our contract for NSP three has been signed between the city and...
Uh, it's authorized to be signed in NSP.
That's correct. I wanted to, uh, just kinda go over, I can take the backseat of this, uh, kind of a statement in me, and this is a slide council seen before, number of households is just under twenty thousand, and kind of the, the problem, that after two thousand, sixteen thousand and one hundred and ninety-six homes traded hands. We've kind of updated some of these slides, and this is, we just recently got the full numbers for two thousand and ten share deed sales, and you can see from two thousand and six to present, what's happened. Uh, the rough number on this is all, is, uh, just under five thousand in the last five years, homes have been foreclosed. And if you go back, we're just under twenty thousand in single-family homes. So you begin to see something that, that looks like one out of every four homes has been impacted by foreclosure. This is the county, uh, you're kinda looking at, at the, uh, records, you know, it's the numbers, uh, oh eight was the record, oh nine, uh, lot of, uh, federal government intervention, uh, where the four banks, as part of the bailout, were asked to hold off, spike in two thousand... two thousand and ten. Uh, we're expecting to see real similar numbers in two thousand and eleven than what we've seen in two thousand and ten. Um, then we just graphed this a different way to show you, you know, still a substantial problem. It looks like if you're doing a five-year look back, pretty much one out of every five homes have been impacted by this foreclosure crisis. This is a map that, uh, we saw originally in NSP one, and tell your city was eligible for NSP one. And you'll see in NSP three, well, a, a part of the city was eligible because of changes in HUD's guidelines. This is the map of September eighth, I didn't put the others in, but we produce this map every three months. The number pretty much ranges from eight hundred, uh, over eight hundred, uh, homes to under a thousand every three months, and the dots just move around the city. And, can you go back to the slide before that?
Yeah.
Um, I, no, uh, next one, sorry, keep going, go over.
The map?
The map, yep. I, I, I was trying to read, and then you clicked off at, um, um, the score, so seven, eight, nine, ten, ten being, uh, the worst. That's correct. This is from two thousand and eight, eight, in the NSP one, HUD took data from the Postal Service, the National Mort- uh, uh, Mortgage, uh, Bankers Association, uh, they looked at, uh, the vacancies and then delinquencies, anyone who was more than eighteen months a delinquent, and they developed a factor. And what they said is any city that scored above a six, those census tracts, or these are the blocks that at this scale were eligible. All of Southfield was eligible under NSP one. Um, in fact, we were the only, uh, city in the state that had a citywide application approved. There were other cities that had a hundred percent of the community open, but we kind of let the marketplace determine that, uh, where, where the funds could be used. I wanted, as I get in, and this applies for both NSP one and three, a number of people hear HUD program, uh, these are low-income folks, uh, maybe we shouldn't be dealing with them, Laker Village turned the program away now because of that. The income level right now for a one-person household can go up to sixty-nine, seven, eighty. So you can make just under seventy thousand and be eligible for this program. A four-person household can make up to seventy-nine, six, eighty. Um, those are substantial numbers. These, these are the area, uh, we have, uh, what's called a low-income category, one person, twenty-three, two-fifties a minimum, up to eight people, forty-three. This is one of our challenging areas, twenty-five percent of the funds had to be spent on this income group, remaining funds were spent on these two groups, and most of our clients are probably fifty-fifty, um, between the two income classifications. Wanted, uh, now just kind of walk you through quickly through NSP one. We had the requirement that twenty-five percent of our funds had to go, uh, towards a twenty-five percent set aside for the, oops, uh, the low in, income group here. We set a goal that at least eight units, uh, would be developed, uh, program income would come back into the program. To date, six families, uh, have been assisted through this program. One home, uh, rehabilitation is in progress. We have acquired seven speculative homes, and the Grove Corporation will be entering into a development agreement with Habitat or Humanity Oakland County for the purpose of developing seven of those speculative homes. The remaining three will probably be undertaken by the, uh, Grove Corporation, and, and I wanted to just give you a footnote here, we're constantly looking at how we can make this program easier to administer. And one of the things HUD has opened up for us are the, uh, the whole concept of development agreements. We may, on the, uh, remaining three homes, put out an RFPQ seeking qualified partners to act as the developers on those remaining three homes. That'll lessen the burden on the city, the developer will be able to make a developer fee, the city will still keep the administrative revenues, that ten percent, which was our activity three. Uh, activity two, we set aside one point six million, uh, these were to assist families in the target B and C group. So, uh, sale of these properties, program income would play forward, um, and to date, thirteen families whose incomes are either low to moderate, LMI, moderate, have been assisted. Assistance to six families is pending, uh, by pending, we primarily have to close those deals. And then the Go- the Grove Corporation has acquired nine speculative homes, which will be targeted, uh, towards, that's the LMI, MMI families. The Southfield Grove, uh, Corporation may seek a developer to assist with the rehab, rehab, rehabilitation, um, of the nine speculative homes. Is it so long? Of the original, uh, three point two grant, the city's eligible to receive administrative fees of this one, a lot. Scott, I'm gonna put you on the spot. We've had program income in this category of about one point two million.
With the new regulations, if they tend to, you know, it's probably closer to one.
All right.
Because it didn't take effect until after.
Okay. So what's our total program income to date?
Uh, I, you check the numbers on that.
Okay. If, if I want to remind council, on, on program income that comes in, that's another ten percent of admin. It's well over, I, I, I think it's well over a million, too.
Yes, well?
Yes. So there's another hundred and twenty thousand that will come to the city for cost of covering salary, uh, as, as such. Um, so this is the, uh, we've, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, one forty-five to date, and then as program income, ten percent comes back to the city. Little catch in that, we have drawn down all of our funds, except for in activity one, there's a bucket of money, as we complete those homes, the funds are allocated, then HUD will allow us to draw down those funds upon completion. Better than the standard HUD, you get paid after you do the, uh, project. Uh, NSP four, and this is the second, uh, item that we'll be asking for council action on, uh, NSP four, we allocated a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, to buy homes that were next to city parks, that also sat low to moderate census, uh, tracts, um, candidly, we, we thought there would be more of these types of properties come up, they just, we didn't find them, but they just simply weren't available. To date, we have three vacant, uh, structures demolished, all demo- demolished properties, uh, are in, uh, are in abutment of public spaces, uh, all cleared properties can be needed to the city for green space expansion. That's the second action we'll be asking for on the twenty-fourth, is we'll be asking the city to accept title of those properties. The next slides, uh, pertain to the properties we've acquired. This property is on Evergreen Road, this is Grace Elementary School. This piece of property is used as a park, it is owned by the school district. That, uh, twenty-one, four, fifteen Evergreen was acquired and has been demolished, uh, this particular home, the entire west elevation was completely rotted, had been an ongoing issue for the building department, they had been in a number of times, uh, so the home is gone. This is a subject parcel we'll be asking the city to take ownership. Our goal is to transfer the ownership of this property and the other two to the city prior to December thirty-first. Um, the combined parcels are there. I just want to point out, you know, we did put up a fence, uh, relative to working with this neighbor, we put up a fence and we worked with them to make sure that they were happy with the new area. So this public space has, has been expanded by this lot. Um, the next, uh, is a possible expansion of Horsetail Woods. This is Horsetail Woods. All right, we're back. This is the home that was acquired, two, two-eleven-eighty-four Berg, been demolished. There's the parcel, um, this is part of Horsetail Woods there. Uh, two-one-nine-four Berg has also been demolished, is one parcel up, there's still a home here, and you can see combined, and both, the combined parcel. We'll be asking council, uh, to agree to accept these two parcels here as well, two-one-nine-four Berg, two-one-eighty-four Berg. Activity five was our direct homeownership assistance, we allocated the remainder of our funds, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, we anticipated it helping at least twenty families. Well, to date, thirty-six families with various income level, levels of low to moderate income or moderate, middle income have been established, that are assisted. The Southfield Grove stabilization has exceeded most communities, not all communities in the state have provided assistance. There are currently forty people on our wait list. Um, this is a map showing all of the parcels we've worked on in the city, and you can just see, you know, where we've, we've pretty much covered every neighborhood in the city. NSP three, I'd like to go back, the entire city was eligible, NSP three, the way the federal government wrote the restriction, only the eastern part of the city was eligible. When we created this target map, we looked at transportation routes, major programs, uh, centers, uh, education, job training facilities, retail establishments were all part of the area. Here we show our speculative homes that we have. So in NSP three, it'll be only the eastern, eastern edge of the city that is eligible. Uh, in NSP three, we had a million eighty-four thousand for activity one, which is again that twenty-five percent set aside, two hundred and seventy-one thousand will be used. For activity two, this is where we're involved in working with clients and buying homes and rehabbing them, under sixty-two thousand. Activity three is down payment assistance, but we've expanded this category to include additional money for renovation, energy star appliances, um, and, uh, whether I say she of homes. On NSP three, our NSP is a hundred and eight thousand, four twenty-five. Uh, again, for both NSP one and three, our request to council on the twenty-fourth is to, uh, brand authority for the mayor and clerk to sign a subrecipient agreement with the Southfield Grove Corporation for NSP one and three. We met with HUD last Monday, um, we're working with the city attorney's office to finalize that subrecipient agreement. As I stated earlier, that is now a standard form with HUD, or standard, uh, contract, and we'll be putting that in a format acceptable to the city attorney's office, and then on the twenty-fourth, ask for the mayor and city clerk to sign a subrecipient agreement. And then the next item is to transfer the ownership of the NSP activity four parcels to the city. Those are the, uh, two parcels on Berg and the one parcel on Evergreen. And I, at this time, will attempt to answer questions, and these are just some of the homes we've, we've worked on.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Farcasi?
Yes. Fred, I, uh, uh, for one, would, uh, like to have a closer relationship with this project than what it has been, uh, so that I can feel, get a feeling for what's really happening in the city. Uh, I, I did not realize that we weren't catching up, I thought we were down substantially because, from what I understand now, is people are having, getting attorneys, and if they don't have that stipulation in their contracts, that the bank will go after you if you walk away, that you're gonna see a whole series of walkaways because, because they, they owe more than the house's worth, and, and they expect that to happen. Uh, secondly, the, I, I was concerned about, I think it was Dohany, I don't know, maybe Jim, you can remember, I don't know, Dohany, when he was treasurer at the county, they raised the penalty fee for, for, uh, for delinquents, taxes, and I think we ought to ask the county to, to reduce their penalty to help people stay in their homes, uh, at least go back to where it was, uh, prior to this increase. Uh, I, I think we have to do something, we cannot keep increasing the amount of homes because we're getting to the point, like, everything you're saying is that, I see the amount of money you have is, is literally nothing when you, when you look at the problem, and I just don't see us catching up, and, and we're gonna, and, and I, I'm very concerned about that. Uh, I really don't have an answer, but, but I think it's gonna take a, a real serious discussion with council to look at the problem and realize how bad it is, I'll use that terminology, uh, and, and see how we're gonna deal with it. Uh, you may need more homes just to, there's around six thousand people from the census that ten to eleven, than, or census ten. I think, uh, I think again, the marketplace is getting so oversaturated for homes that, that, you know, we're looking at, at another wave coming at us, and all the things that I mentioned, each one's gonna be a considerable amount going forward, and, and, and I have a great concern, I know I have five on my street today that walk, and, and, uh, and, and it's a shame because houses really are, are great houses, and, and, uh, people just walk from them. Uh, the other thing, I think, is we still haven't, we, we're doing any land banking or...
I, I think the challenge for us in, uh, Michigan is when we think of land banking, we think of the state legislation, uh, the law passed by the state. And the law puts the power in the county's hand, not the local government, unless you're a city with a primary school district, and perhaps councilman Seibert can, uh, define what a primary school district, there's only a few, my understanding from speaking with attorneys, is there's only a few cities that meet that definition of primary schools. Um, and there's none in Oakland County, I think there's Flint, Detroit, there are only handful of cities that met that unique language that they put in. So the answer is relative to land banks as defined by the state of Michigan, we're not eligible as a city unless the county creates one first, and then has a subcomponent for the city to do that. There is though, the concept of land banking in principle, uh, where a city through either general funds or CDVG, uh, community development block grant funds or other funds buys property. And I'll use, for example, we do have a land bank just north of McDowell Towers, very quietly, as properties comes up, through CDVG, uh, and the Southfield nonprofit, they have been acquiring parcels through them. CDVG, early on, did acquire some parcels along Greenfield as part of redevelopment strategies. I think the issue for us is, all of you as council members are aware, that the, you know, what we used to get in community development block grant dollars used to be a whole lot more than what we're getting, as much as four or five hundred thousand, and then when you index that number for inflation, it really is substantially less. But Southfield did, in theory, land bank some of the parcels you acquired along Greenfield. I think, uh, even the parcel on the Greenfield, uh, twelve mile, there were some parcels that the city bought years ago, I, I think it was in Old Tulsa?
That was for Sky, the same housing.
Very, yeah, so very few...
It went on.
So, the, at, at a certain point, it would be, the question becomes, you know, create, create an entity that could do this, uh, you know, the city could do it, the nonprofit could do it, the Southfield Grove Corporation could come, could be asked to do it. The ultimate challenge is, is how do you capitalize it initially? Where do those funds come from?
Through the chair, I think that one way we can, uh, address this...
Through the chair, I think that one way we can, uh, address this is, you know, we have the budget coming up, it seems like it never stops, but officially, the next year's budget will be doing a kickoff, uh, like we do early in January. But prior to that, I think we could take and do a whole section on just the tax base. Because that's, that takes into account all of this. Because these programs, uh, this is an excellent program, it's a labor of love, and I give Fred and his staff a lot of credit for, for having one of the best, if not the best, programs in the state, probably a leader in the country. But, uh, we, again, we can have like a whole unit just on the tax base. Um, you know, what we've been doing is just talking about projections and, you know, the, the net fiscal result without getting into, uh, the details. So maybe we need to do that this time, and we can do it through the finance committee so that it doesn't end up being, you know, something that, you know, it has to be presented in a concise, concise form.
And if anything, if I may, just at the risk of, you know, tipping my hand, Councilman Cybert and I have this conversation, the Southfield nonprofit manages some properties. One of the, the concept is, the Southfield nonprofit has not been paying itself its management fee, there's a substantial receivable from each of the limited liability companies that own the, the properties. And one concept may be to refinance those properties and allow a large amount of funding to come back from the nonprofit and then have them undertake whatever targeted neighborhoods, uh, we would like to see acquisition done in. One of the challenges on activity four was that the, the home had to sit in a low to moderate census tract, and that's only about twenty percent of the city. That made it a little bit harder to use those funds. In the President's Job Bill, by formula, Southfield would be getting well over six and a half million dollars if that bill was funded. If the piece pertaining to HUD is funded, that's the type of allocation we could expect to see. And in NSP four, it's been written that we can use it more broadly to do acquisition of abandoned buildings and demolition. So those are some of the things. I think everyone in this room knows the, the speculative nature of that piece of legislation, but when you read it, expanded, uh, the, the web conference call I was on, it would allow us to be brought, you know, for example, within the cornerstone district, which sits in an eligible census tract, there are a number of abandoned buildings, and those funds could then be used for acquisition and demolition.
I guess, uh, Fred, what I'm, I'm saying is that, is that this is not in any way, uh, stating that the program that we have that administers properly, and you guys are doing a great job, I just think that the amount of money that you have to work with is, is nowhere near enough money to deal with the problem. And, 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 and when that happens, there's gotta be some kind of, of city strategy and set policy on how we're gonna go forward. Uh, and, and I agree that those properties that are next to city parks and woods or whatever, they can be acquired and added to that, that nature land, I'll call it that. But, but we're finding more and more homes that are in neighborhoods and having a deteriorating effect on the neighborhood because you're sitting there with, with notes on them and papers on them and handouts on them and flyers on them. And, and, you know, I go around the neighborhood, I pick them all up.
Soon as we can legally take them off the door, we do.
Yeah, I, I take them off the door anyway. But anyway, uh, but anyway, that's happily, that could go away. But anyway, but, uh, but, you know, the notices that, that are up there, red tag everything, and, and, and I guess, um, I guess I'd like to see some of these houses that are in a value, uh, that has become a, I, I don't know, you, you're finding houses ten, fourteen thousand dollars that, that are standing there and no, no buyers. And, and I said, those houses are, are ripe for, for adverse effects in neighborhoods. And, and to me, those homes should be tore down when it hit that value, you know, where twice them are worth the land, and maybe lot splits and given to the adjacent properties or something, uh, but something has to end pretty quick because if you don't get on the fast track with this, accumulation of vacant homes is gonna prefer to the point where we're not gonna be able to even deal with it. And if, if everything they're saying that comes to pass, you know, we're gonna see houses in South that go for two thousand, three thousand dollars, I'm afraid. And some of these homes, mostly the bungalows that are sitting in some areas, and in fact, they're gonna go Detroit twice if they want to save, and really giveaways. And, and I don't want that to happen, and I don't know how to, uh, do it. I, I, uh, I was wondering also, if a home is, is sold for like ten thousand dollars or whatever the tissue price that some of them are going for, uh, do those have to be like S H A where, where before they're occupied, you have to meet all the codes of the city, and we go in and inspect them and make sure they're up to code so that the housing stock stays strong, those homes that we are, you know, able to handle? And the other thing is that I believe there's a lot of rental homes in the city that we have not accounted for. And, and, uh, and I know that from two different homes in my neighborhood that are rented, and I know they're not registered, but they, but they seem like they're rented for two, three, four months, and then people tear up the house inside, the owner not from this area, and they'd be upset, you know? Uh, and that is just, you know, in my neighborhood, these things accumulate all throughout the city, and you can find many examples of it. And, uh, you know, and your, your, uh, point that, you know, that, that one, uh, display that has, has the points on it, and you say, well, they keep moving all over the place. Well, that's like the kids used to get something with a mallet, you know, and this pops up over here, we don't seem to be winning, they're not disappearing, they're just coming up somewhere else. And, and so, you know, I, I just, I'm just rambling on, but I'm just saying is that somehow, you know, uh, we've gotta wipe out, as far as I'm concerned, about five thousand homes in the city to make the others marketable. And that figure is ba, really based on the amount of people who've moved out of the city by census and what's coming aboard. And we can end up with ten thousand homes that are vacant in the city. And, and I, I guess I'd like to hear more from, uh, you and, and your staff, people who are working with this every day, of really what is the situation here? And, and maybe if there is a strategy, if there is a strategy, you know, what the heck is it? You know, uh, if, if we are the only city that's really getting, getting hit this way, and, and then, then we've gotta find an answer somehow, uh, before we become, uh, I don't wanna say it, I don't say it. But anyway, I just, I just think that, uh, Jim, that we, Mr. President, that this is a serious, to me, a very, very serious situation. And, and you know, that one time we, we had surplus of money where we could fight these things off, I always say we could buy our way out of trouble, but with everything being reduced and getting, getting on the revenue side so badly, you know, that thing, the amount of money we got to fight off this thing is, is completely, is decreasing fast. And I don't see anything coming aboard.
But the things that are coming along that we don't, haven't even met yet, that we know are.
Well, you know, I, I did, you know, I deal with this, and, and I just see that, you know, we're getting swamped with, with this. And, uh, I, I guess, uh, everybody knows, you know, they live in their neighborhoods, you know, it's not just my neighborhood, and every one of us in this city here understand what the situation is. But I think they're dependent upon the city council to try to, to work hard on this and figure out what to do with it. I mean, the last one we got was three point two million, wasn't it? And then we divvied it up. And how much is this one?
Uh, this is a, a million eighty-four thousand. And your, your last one, you've not only got the, you've got another million two that's as we, as we've sold homes, you know? Played a little bit forward.
Yeah, but how many have you sold? See, that's what bothers me, I mean, we're not selling them, sitting up or being buyers.
Well, selling them passing up, and, uh, we consider this an investment in our neighborhoods.
Yeah.
The, uh, you know, remind council that you did adopt the orders on all the vacant foreclosed homes, that they, they are registered, they have to register, they are inspected. While our biggest challenge for the building department is those homes are sold. You know, a bank may sell Mr. and Mrs. Jones a home, and they buy the home, and good intentions of making improvements, maybe they don't always happen. And that's where it becomes a very challenging, the home has a new owner who's able to make the mortgage, but are they in a position to make the investment? Uh, on the neighborhood stabilization, uh, homes, we work to ensure that the homes have a certificate of compliance, prior occupancy. We exceed that standard in the interest of time I didn't put it in. Our homes, the majority of them, we hardwareed the smoke detectors, if the basements are finished, we put in egress windows. There have been certain homes, and I'll use the home on Heritage Court, north of Twelve Mile, that it probably would have been more cost effective to tear that home down because of the amount of water damage for foundation of the basement. However, when we assessed the rest of the neighborhood, if the whole, all the other homes were in good shape, there was a subdivision built, had we taken that lot, we would have had a very unique land pattern, um, everyone there had a uniform lot size, the homes were similar brick, square footage, similar architectural characteristic. To take a home down and possibly in future have an infill, you might have had a disruptive pattern in the design and the aesthetic feel of that neighborhood. But there are clearly certain neighborhoods that make sense. The homes we tore down on, uh, along Berg, well, the lots are similar in lot size and such, but the homes themselves were modest, uh, all of them had extensive, extensive maintenance issues. I just gotta comment, the photos of the.
Rather complimentary.
Very. And when you got inside, uh, Scott can speak to the conditions of both of these homes, and I had been, been in them. This house, uh, I would call, I called it moron house. There was, they kept adding more on and more on and more on. You'd walk through the back, little addition, you're going through the kitchen to get to the bedroom, you go through the bedroom to get to the dining room. It was kind of one of these homes that, at a different time, it wasn't designed by a builder or an architect, it was very unique.
The first one wasn't pretty either.
No.
That was very complimentary. That one is real complimentary.
Jim, you were in this.
I was in that, this one, yeah.
And this is the one that had, that other house had these crazy stairs in the back, right?
That had some issues.
Two one nine four Berg actually had stairs, they looked at, had a nightmare which could form a rick.
Any kind of stairs. Looked more like a ladder.
It did, it did. And in fact, the rises were different heights depending on where you were in the staircase. It was not.
Those were all part of our decision tree, that we looked at it, could the home be rehabbed? What was the feel of the neighborhood? Would we be disrupting it? Uh, and most of our homes substantially, anything the engineering department asked for relative to cell pump, water, couple of the homes down on the east side of the city where we know we have stormwater issues, we put in backup cell pumps, we put in new wheat fields, we, you know, we, you know, we went the extra mile in making sure that the wheat tiles were flushed, and we've learned an awful lot about different construction in different neighborhoods and different problems the city experiences.
But if, let me just say this, I think you done shared this with council. I was invited to one of these sheriff's sales up at the county, and, and, you know, I, I really become sick to the stomach because it's done in the lobby. I've never been to one before, and they're done in the lobby. And, and before it happens, you start seeing these people appearing with lawn chairs and, and, and they make it like a, you know, there's no place to sit. So they bring lawn chairs and they, and, and they fill up this whole lobby with, with people, and they read off all these foreclosures, and, and then people can bid on these things. And, and it's almost like a carnival. And, and I said, man, I've never thought I'd ever dreamed to live with this. And, and, and so this is at the county level, and I'm just saying is, it's actually really frightening, and every, every week, I guess it occurs, and they, and they fill the lobby with, with foreclosures, and another do include the tax sales.
Our number was over eight hundred, over, over eight hundred of them.
Yeah. And, and, and so, I mean, I, I'm saying is that I am really, really, for the first time, really frightened of what's gonna hit us. And, and I've always been a positive thinker, but I, I just see us, you know, taking one step forward and ten back. And I just don't have the answer, but, you know, there aren't enough people to buy these homes, and there's not enough people to rent these homes. Uh, and it, you know, once was, you know, people who, who just were moving out of the city, but even people who can afford these houses, that is, walk in, the ten thousand dollar house here, fifteen thousand, I mean, everybody, you know, they, I mean, it's less than a car. And I, and I keep saying to myself, you know, the lot has gotta be worth money, even if the house is destroyed, the lot's gotta be worth more than the money that it goes for. And, and so, you know, I look at these houses that are in that range, uh, you say you get a hundred fifty thousand dollar for tearing houses down, and, and we just start taking those houses that are very low and need a lot of work, and, and, uh, nobody's investing in them because it takes too much money to get it back on the market, that we just demolish them. I'd rather see an empty lot, and, and maybe it's split and given to the next door neighbors than see deterioration in the city. I don't know, I'm really atonic right now. I tell you, it made me sick.
Mr. Cybert?
Um, Fred, I wanna, uh, to commend you on what you've done with this. I, I think it's tremendous. Um, it's not enough, but you seized what was available, and you've done a tremendous job with it. Scott, uh, I compliment you too, and your partner, Diane. I agree with, uh, with what, uh, Don is saying. I know in NSP three, uh, we're getting new public, uh, act, activity by public property, make park property. Um, I'm glad to show those pictures because I could, below Nine Mile, uh, I could point to dozens of homes that I consider obsolete. They're, um, I call them old houses, homes. They were conscious, they, they were very, very modest homes. Um, uh, most of them have not gotten better or kept up. And, uh, it, uh, I see it myself, but I, I also hear from people. Um, uh, I've had several, I, you know, I, um, as many as you know, I, I recently purchased a home with seventy-two code violations that, uh, was vacant and registered, and it's not inhabitable. Um, and I hope to make it inhabitable, but, uh, this one is worth saving, it's a solid home. Uh, it's just been destroyed inside, uh, at the Rufus shop. But there are other houses that they aren't worth putting any money into, and, um, they tend to attract, uh, if they're rented, uh, they don't tend to attract people who are going to put money in them. And you have almost a slumlord condition. And, um, they're, they really take away from the ability of, or the incentive for other people to put money into homes. homes. Uh, or for people to stay in the neighborhood. Um, as I was working on my home, a woman came up and said, well, uh, she's on Spahelin, and she's moving because the houses are going to hell. And, uh, she thought I was crazy. Um, and, you know, I, I, I think, I agree with Don. We should, we really should, um, in the, if we can find a way to find answers if there's an NSP four, that we just clean some lots off, um, and then try to restore the homes that of quality that we have or that are, uh, salvageable. But there are, there are a lot of homes that I would say are pre nineteen fifties, that are, um, or mid fifties, that, that are really kind of marginal. Uh, and we ought to get them off, um, the, uh, the foot. And I, you said something that intrigued me also. Um, the home behind you, um, sold for, uh, sixty-four thousand. Um, very dated, um, all these illegal structures in the backyard. And, um, I hadn't been back there, but when I went up for sale, I went and looked, looked at the house, and I was just sort of amazed at all the stuff that was built without a building permit. And, um, I was told by Wayne Jewell, uh, that they couldn't occupy the house while all that stuff was torn down. Uh, they're now in the house, and as far as I can tell, uh, there's a fence and it's ninety-sixty-five, that's low. All that stuff is still there. So are, are you telling us that we're not getting full compliance when, um, you know, there are these, um, various violations?
I, I, my statement would be that compliance is, is just difficult. Because yes, people do move in these homes, and it becomes a legal proceeding, which is very time consuming for staff, the documentation, for city attorney. Uh, the courts sometimes are, uh, by personal opinion, sometimes too lenient. Um, but it, it takes a real concentrated effort. And we stay on those. Uh, I'll look at that particular address and, and look at the detail. But I know every time I get into one of these, there's, it's not a ten minute story. It ends up being a half day task. And I get it in multiple sections of the city. I know from my weekly, um, meetings with the building department, they exist. I mean, they're constantly briefing us. And I know every week, we're making progress on something in court or with the city attorney's office. But I think, you know, every week, we move a step forward and two more things pile on.
Well, you, you know, um, again, using my own example, uh, uh, the house with seventy-two code violations, there's no way I could fix that in thirty days.
Right.
Um, light fixtures wired with, uh, extension cords. Uh, uh, and first you gotta do the roof because there's water and mold, and, uh, and without the roof, you got nothing. Uh, so, um, I know the building department works with people, and if you file progress reports, they give you more time. Uh, but I'm very glad we passed that vacant house ordinance, uh, and the inspection, because it'd be a whole lot of work. Um, and we'd have, we'd have people camping and all. Um, the house that I took over, I don't know how anybody lived in it. It was that filthy. Um, and smelled, uh, between the mold and the dog feces. Uh, you just wonder, how, how do people live like that?
Okay. Mr. Taylor?
Oh, thank you. I've been asked by involved in the terms of, just to ask a couple questions. I'm gonna do that. Um, one of the questions was, if you could explain section three as it relates to the whole, uh, compliance, and if the city is going to be, or say, compliant with that section three.
The city is in compliance with section three. Section three is a requirement in the community development block grant requirement spent on the books since nineteen sixties. So I think since nineteen sixty-eight. Um, in January of two thousand and nine, HUD advised , uh, communities that they were gonna start enforcing section three requirements. Section three requirements require that, uh, CDVG, Community Development HUD dollars be spent to benefit low income contractors. Here's the challenge on that. Many of these programs have Davis Bacon provisions. So those folks who administer these programs, we bid our jobs out to pay prevailing wage, usually in Metro Detroit, union wages. And then we're all supposed to meet a low income set aside. It is riddled with so much, uh, conflict. However, uh, Mr. Avowski has taken the lead on our section three, both he and Ms. Pegler, as well as Eric Williams have attended a number of training. Our first, uh, the first time it showed up in a HUD audit, um, we, we weren't compliant. We are in compliance today. Um, we are cautious about future interpretation of these guidelines that some of them do conflict, conflict. And we point these out to HUD. You want us to pay prevailing wage, but yet employ low income. Which is it? So we're continuing to work with HUD field staff. It is at every, um, Michigan Community Developers Association meeting, there are sessions being taught on it. So yes, Southfield is in compliance. We're still trying to figure out what it means to be compliant. And Scott, currently, the two jobs we just bid had all of the required section three paperwork in it, and the contractors have to self-certify.
Correct. Currently, the law states that contractors must self-certify that they are section three compliant. We are asking all bidders to certify whether they are or are not in the bidding process upfront, uh, beforehand. We also have a list of contractors that we contact based on their, their interest in our program. They all must still have the same form of contract of bidding. Uh, there are several requirements, several different levels of being a section three contractor, and those will, will grant you access to these section three status. Uh, currently, because we have been asking every contractor to leave and come to check interest, we're in compliance with section three.
We coordinated the section three requirements with the city's purchasing department. Um, last Monday, uh, in meeting with the contractor who will be facilitating our next two renovations, we specifically talked about that, and we pushed them as hard as we can within the letter of the law.
Well, how many, how many contracts, how many low, um, minority contracts?
It's not minority. It is low income. It is, it is, you know, I mean, there's this statement that it is minority. The requirement is actually low income.
Low income.
That's correct.
A low income contract.
Yep. And it could be the contractor or his employees. So the contractor can certify that, oh, two of my employees live in a low census tract area. For example, one of our contractors who is low, uh, is in a low income area, is McDonald Associates. The fact that they're located in a low to moderate census income tract, they make a tract, and, uh, I think they have a firm down in the address, but they're on eight and a half mile in Oak Park or in that vicinity. That neighborhood is a low to moderate neighborhood. So it counts, and that shows up in our, our documentation. So I would need to turn to Erica Williams, who does those reports. And Scott, they're every six months or annually?
Uh, section three report are annual.
They're, it's an annual report. I expect in the future, though, that it could move to a quarterly format. So we could get that number to you and copies of last year's report. But, um, I think everyone immediately thinks it's minority. It, it is a low income, and it's about getting people to work who live in low to moderate census tract areas. You know, there's also the other conflict. Our job is to get the best bid. That's the other thing. So, you know, we are, um, on, on cross renovation.
What is doing projects?
Yeah, yeah. Cross renovation, our meeting last week, we had purchasing there. We're asking them to take part of the job and find someone who meets those requirements. Um, that's where the challenge lies at. It's not a set aside where you have to, but you, right now, the goal is you have to file the report and make best effort.
And I do wanna say that you, you and the, I think I've done that, I'm presenting this information. This is a lot of information, and it's hard to put together some of that.
And the rules are constantly changing. I mean, this is section three. Um, they roll it out in January of oh nine and say, oh, by the way, and it wasn't in one of the normal classes. They had a woman in from Washington DC who said, this has been on the books for years, we're gonna start enforcing it. And everyone like, so the next year, we're all gearing up and trying to figure out, how do you enforce it? What does it mean? What do you do about these conflicting, uh, objectives?
So it's not how many, this, this, that you put forth the effort?
That's correct.
And you can show.
Mr. Smith, can I ask?
Yeah, I have an interesting question, Fred. Do you don't have a list of the size of the lots of the homes that keep the moment?
Uh, we, we know we can get that. Do I have it right now, tonight? No.
Okay. Cause there is a company that is willing to create farmland, uh, lots. And of course, I have to be a certain size, one acre maybe, more than that. But even smaller ones can be created as farmland.
There are a number of communities who are using NSP to create community farms. Um, certainly, in fact, there's a whole section in NSP one that was audited.
That's divided by farmland.
Is that it? Okay. Anyone else have any comments? I have a few comments. One is, uh, you mentioned that one of the things that you do when you, uh, recondition a home is that you finish the basement and put in egress windows?
If the basement is finished. If the basement is being used as living space, we put in egress windows.
But you don't finish an unfinished basement?
We haven't been, but most of the basements we encounter have been finished to one degree or another. And part of our objective is, we wanted the building department to be able to point to more neighborhoods where egress windows exist. I mean, the fire, the fire that happened in Oak Park over the weekend, the children were saved because there was an egress window in that basement. It, and it is, they range in price from three thousand to forty-five hundred dollars for an egress window. So the average family refinishing their basement, I can imagine the dialogue between the husband and wife. You're refinishing the basement, coming up with another, you know, four thousand dollars could be another big, big ticket item. Easy to say, I don't like doing it.
Um, would it be beneficial when you look at a house, and the house has a, a finished basement of one yelp or another, to have the building department go down and take a look at it to find out if it meets any kind of our code, and if not, unfinish it as part of the, uh, refurbishing of the house?
That's, that certainly can. And the building department inspects everyone of these homes.
But, uh-
Uh, we could, we could unfinish it as well.
Because, uh, if they have not used, if they have not used, uh, uh, got permits, and they've just done it, and it doesn't meet our, our standards, aren't we aggravating a situation by putting an egress window in it and?
There is. And let me, in our, in our NSP one, our activity two, we had the end buyers bar. When people renovated, saw the home, they saw a partial finished basement at Oak Park. So we tried to mimic what was there when the homeowner selected. In certain cases, we did not finish the full basement. Heritage Court, uh, we only did half of it. We, we were able in certain, you know, to get our, to reduce our costs. But in those homes, we did put the egress windows.
Okay. Um, in your presentation, you said that we have purchased seven speculative, speculative homes, and we've finished it. Now we're looking for people to put in them?
Um, for our activity one, we have seven speculative homes. Most of those homes are the neighborhood between Catalpa, Twelve Mile, uh, Greenfield, and, uh, Pierce.
Twenty acres.
Um, and then we have just the one that is north of Twelve Mile. And those seven homes, four of them, the Growth Corporation, will enter into development agreement with Habitat for Humanity. In activity two, we have another nine speculative homes that we will finish and list those, uh, if we can find a buyer beforehand, we'll, we'll start the process to sell it. But those will most likely be listed with brokers and sold as NSP homes. And the only people who can buy them are NSP income eligible.
Okay. Now, the, uh, the concern that I have is that when people purchase homes, there's no, uh, calculation that you can come up with that says, somebody's gonna buy this home. You know, people make a decision based on a lot of different things. It may be victory backyard. It may be the way the flowers are. It, it, it may not have anything to do with the, the house itself, other than the house has enough bedrooms in it or, or whatever. Um, it would seem to me that we would find the people, or the, the people would find the house that they want, and then we would work with them to up, upgrade the house, rather than, uh, go out by the, it's, it's the reverse of location, location, location for business.
What you were describing, Mr. President, is what we did in our activity two. And that's what made us more successful than our Pierce, that we had the homeowner selected.
Right.
The challenge we had was we had to have these funds committed and obligated within a HUD deadline of last of September two thousand and ten. And in doing that, that forced our hand to make some speculative purchases. Uh, and working with the Detroit Field Office, they were a little nervous. Oh, and, and when we were in March of two thousand and ten, they were very nervous about our model working. And we demonstrated, just as you said, working with the client, letting them pick the home, we were able to do things that people have said were crazy for. Why are you letting your homeowners pick the color of, of, of the interior paint? And you go to Westland, you go to Garden City, what, everything's beige. It's beige and beige and beige. And it's, 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 uh, we worked with the client, carpet. That worked for the most part. We've had some hiccups, and, you know, my, I tell my staff, this is the dog, you know, I'm not gonna tell you we're freeless. We've got some fleas. And, you know, we work to remove them when we can and mitigate and make changes. But the model you're describing is what made us better than the others. And that's my fear with the, uh, nine activity two homes. Now we gotta find buyers for them. It appears, which one do you show? We've one on Bellwood. We got one on Bellwood, and it looks like we could, we've got a client who's qualified, and we can make that deal. So guess what? We're gonna focus our next efforts immediately. We're gonna work on closing that deal. The two that are under renovation, we've got buyers for those. Those are our next two deals to close. They'll close the end of the year, January. Bellwood will probably follow to, to be closed January, uh, February, March.
Now, if I remember right, when the program first came out, it was a five-year program?
Originally, there were documents that read five, our contract says four. There were, in the law, there were documents that said five, and some said four. Our contract says four years.
Okay. So we'll take four years, which makes it even, uh, worse. Supposing at the end of the four years, when we either use the money or have to give it back, and we've spent the money on the homes, but we can't sell them, what happens to those homes?
Um, I imagine HUD's gonna have to continue to. If we own it and we've done the work, we will continue to have to sell it. And as though that income is sold, that money would go back to the, uh, to, to Detroit Field Office, to HUD, as program income.
Yeah, because it is HUD's money.
That's correct.
It's not our money, it's HUD's money.
And on every one of these homes, we have liens, depending upon the family's income. Some of the liens go away after five years. Some, a lot of the liens never go away. And when those homes are sold in the future, uh, you know, five, ten, twenty years, it'll run, there'll still be someone running it by our successors in legal. What does this mean?
Okay. And the, uh, I think maybe the last question I have is, um, I agree with, uh, Mr. Ficassi, up to a point about tearing down the houses, splitting them, splitting the lives. up to a point about tearing down the houses, splitting them, splitting the lots. That may make it more complicated because if we do just a handful of those, that's fine because two people end up with larger lots. But if we, if this becomes the way of life, what we've done is we've locked ourselves out of new construction because the lot that would, would support a new construction now belongs to two other people. And so, right now, we have too many homes. I wouldn't want to handicap ourselves by giving away the property so that someone that came in that wanted to build an infill house in a particular neighborhood couldn't do it because there were, you know, wasn't any, wasn't any lots of it, there weren't any lots available. So if we do it, we have to use a judicial approach that we don't paint ourselves into a corner.
We did send, Diana, you went to the land bank conference, right?
Uh, yeah.
But that was a three-day conference in Detroit and we've been examining, because we know this, we do need more tools. And it's, it's, staff knows we need a land banking tool. We need one that works for Southfield. We support any attempt in Oakland County to establish one. Originally, I was very skeptical of the Wayne County Turbo Program, the subset of Wayne County's Land Bank Program. I think it could work here. But we first need to get Oakland County to get one and then the Turbo would be a whole, there are a number of legal challenges to that and I'm not sure if that would be palatable to some of the folks we work with in Oakland County.
Yeah, one thing, and I'm just thinking way outside the boxes, rather than split the lot and give it to the people in the town, it's sort of like what Mr. Lantz has said, keep it as a city property and they can have neighborhood victory gardens or something, you know, similar to victory gardens.
There are communities that will allow the neighbors to do a ground lease. For so many years, no permanent structures can be built in the event that the land can, could eventually be assembled and amassed for a larger project.
That might be an excellent idea, to lease it to one or the other homeowners.
The Cleveland area, I think, the county that Cleveland is, there's a lot of.
Cayoga.
Cayoga.
Cayahoga.
Cayahoga.
They're doing a lot of it. I read an article a couple of months ago about it. They have forms and actually, the documents are all online and it's pretty innovative.
I don't know if you've seen where the Lafayette Building was downtown? That's a fabulous community area. Beautiful, across from, ticked corner from the west, that's beautiful.
Drive down John R. on your way to Tiger Stadium to see two community gardens, Roosevelt Park in front of the old train station, the community garden. Quite a few times, you know. And HUD loves the community garden concept.
Well, I got the company that's willing to come in tomorrow.
We're happy to, we're happy to have a dialogue with them.
They will give everybody tomatoes. Yeah, tomatoes and, and.
Collard greens.
The, what are they? Not okra, no. They're, they're, the gourds. Does anyone have, Mr.?
When this, far back, this astronaut was up there and he looked down at Detroit and he envisioned it with a green ring around, around it. And, and it made me think about Southfield, that, that in places where you have the older homes, what the, what the cyber was describing, that you could take and offer those individuals a move up to one of the, the houses that we have that has been refurbished, maybe it's easier to maintain, whatever, to tear those houses down and create, you know, a, a big, large green belt, is we turn it back to nature. It's necessarily have to be a garden per se, but, but, you know, make it go back because I, I really, Mr. President, I don't agree, I don't think you're going to see too many new homes being built anyway. I mean, Polte tried to build homes and they're under investigation for, for not hiring, you were hiring teenagers and not paying scale and not paying overtime. So they, these builders are now even, they're trying to save a buck and build a new home in these conditions, you know, they're not going to be building homes. They're afraid to. And, and I, I just, I just don't think that in, you know, next 10 years, 15 years, you're going to see new homes being built.
Yeah, I, I wasn't thinking of tracts, you know, of homes or new neighborhoods. I was thinking just single infills.
Yeah, but you know, it's a task with a hundred, a hundred dollars a square foot for a new home. You can buy one for 10 cents, 100 dollars a day. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to buy a, to buy a lot and you're paying more for the land than in the house. So I don't know, I just think that there has to be some new ideas, thinking out of the box a little bit. I, I just think we have a problem with that type of result.
Hard problems don't have easy answers.
What?
Hard problems don't have easy answers.
You know, that's why sometimes you're going to take some, this, on-the-table discussions and hearing the experiences of the day of meetings, because, you know, the day meetings suck every day and I'm dealing with them and we don't get feedback. And, and you know, if you're doing a great job, that's why you don't get a feedback. Nobody's complaining about it and, but I don't get a feel for how, you know, how bad the situation is until you read the Wall Street Journal. But on the outside, you know, there was a big article in the Wall Street Journal that housing Detroit and metropolitan area, you know, are starting to move and, and they showed a 3% increase, which was unusual for the rest of the nation. So it must be because of the new people going to work and getting jobs, I guess. Because the auto will build is.
They're a lot cheaper than every place else.
Yeah.
Mr. President, we'd like to thank the council of Southfield for making this presentation. The 24th will again be a request to formalize the relationship with the subreciproting agreement, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement as reviewed by city attorney's office, for the city to accept these three parcels completed under activity four. Wanted to just acknowledge the work of Erica Williams, Diana Pegler, and Scott. This has been a real learning curve in a changing program. My last thought for council is there is an incredible opportunity in this restorative economy, whether it's our office buildings or our retail centers, as we adapt to rebuild our, our buildings. The challenge for us, like, unlike Greenfield Development, where it happens in these large tracts, is the restorative economy is more spot in its nature, one home and another. Husband and wife sell a home, couple gets divorced, pass away, young couple moves in. Hopefully that invests, it's very spotty. It's not the mass that you see, and I drive to South Line probably once a month and I still see new homes going up there. And I say to myself, where are, how is it, how can this happen? But all that investment is brand new. For us, as a suburban community our size, that'll be our challenge, recognizing we ride that cycle and that, you know, I view NSP as an investment, not in the individual home, but the entire community. We take a haircut on most of these homes, but it's an investment in our neighborhoods for Southfield's future.
Ms. Baxton?
Brad, are all the families that we've assisted with these homes, are they paying us back? And if not, what are we doing to force them on?
Everyone, we are being paid back. I mean, we, we, most of the homes have mortgages. We have some land contracts that we are cashing out. We've got a couple that may not end in an outright sale and we may find ourselves, well, we have a consent order on one that the family has not been able to consummate with the mortgage. So we find ourselves in an awkward position and taking those legal remedies, but we've entered into a mutual agreement. We have another, one other home that pays a monthly fair rent, but everyone else is in a land contract. And Diana, we have one more land contract to close out.
Yeah.
We did six last September.
Yeah, we had six that we entered into on September 30th, two thousand and 10. We have closed on three of those. And one of the things that we do is we contact various lenders and it's part of what I do is negotiate deals with lenders and present the situation and work with the client and the lender and the underwriter to ensure that these deals come to closure. We just did one on, last week, and it netted us over eighty-seven thousand dollars. So it takes a lot of time to negotiate these deals, but we're getting closer day by day.
And all of our land contract payments, every month, we're paid on time?
Everyone is paid as agreed. I keep the record. Anyone else?
Thank you.
I want to add something. I just want to compliment you on this really comprehensive presentation. I think it pulls a lot of things together that we had pieces up before and I really appreciate the effort that went into it and you were just, this is, I think, more, and things I didn't even understand, didn't even know about, but I think a lot of effort went into this presentation. And the beauty of stuff that you guys do is incredible. Thank you very much. Anything else, counsel?
Do you have anything?
Um, I do have, I do have concerns that were going to me while I was going, it was on the code enforcement and I'm not sure, I guess I should ask.
What?
And it was not in one area, it was like all over and one thing that kept coming up and so I'd really like to talk to somebody. So what I'm, what I'm asking.
Can I have Jerry?
Yes, could you arrest me to whom I should speak?
I'll have Jerry McCauskey give you a call.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, if anybody wants to, we have cheerleading lessons. Signs are all over town.
That was just.
Seven dollars.
Yeah. Are you, have anything else?
No, that's good.
Ms. Smithy? Thank you all.